Two minutes till broadcast, one minute till streaming. We are now streaming, one minute till broadcast.
Hey Kim, I'm good. Happy Thursday, everybody, happy Thursday. I'd like to call the Durham City Council work session to order for this, the fifth day of October 2023. We certainly want to welcome all of you who have joined us today in chambers and those who are joining us remotely as well. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor O'Neil.
I am here.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Holsey Hyman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
And Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, we are now going to recognize, or I'm now going to recognize my colleagues for announcements, looking to my right. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, ma'am, to you and to my honorable colleagues, to everyone in the chamber and anyone who may be watching on whatever platform. Madam Mayor, firstly, I just want to call attention that the week without driving continues in our city. I want to send a special shout out to our friends at Bike Durham and to our friends at Reality Ministries as well. I've spent the week taking the bus and walking, using ride share and re-fallen, re-fallen in love with our city. There's a different perspective when you don't have to pay attention to the road when you're going down the street and noticing things. I want to encourage, whether you're participating or not, to give special thought to those that have to navigate our city and negotiate our city who do not have the option of jumping in a car. Think about all the things you do during the day and how many places you're able to be and things you're able to accomplish because you just jump in a car and do it. Now, keep that list and take the ability to ride in a car away. It puts a greater emphasis on how navigable and negotiable our city is. And I've said time and time again, one of the thresholds the city has to cross in order to be considered truly great is that it has to be negotiable without a car. And I want to thank the folk at Go Durham, friends that I've bumped into that I hadn't seen in a long time, riding on the bus. I also want to invite residents and neighbors in the city to try and make a deliberate effort, maybe one or two times a month, make a plan and use our public transportation system, use our bike paths, walk somewhere, get somebody to give you a lift. Our public transportation system is free in Durham and we've made a commitment to that. But what makes mass transit affordable is mass. It's more people riding, a diverse ridership that de-stigmatizes public transportation, that gives us a base upon which to build. So I want to, again, congratulate folk, Madam Mayor. I'll be reading a proclamation for the folk tomorrow and I want to thank you for issuing that proclamation to the folk at Bike Durham and our friends from Reality Ministries as well tomorrow during the day sometime in recognition of the week. And I want to thank you for your support. Also, finally, just want to send a shout out to the Durham Housing Authority and the Durham Police Department for an incredible National Night Out celebration. This past Tuesday, got to visit a few neighborhoods, went to shout out Wall Town and Oxford Manor, now Buend Pastor Church for great food, for some great celebrations and fellowship during National Night Out and thank all of the residents that participated in it as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor, that ends my announcements.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to make an announcement and just thank folks for calls, texts, emails and all the support, just knowing that my neighbors experienced a great loss this weekend. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone publicly because I might not get a chance to thank you all and just know that, you know, domestic violence is always with us and we just want to stay vigilant around addressing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Caballero?
Yeah, I just want to shout out a Parks and Rec event that's going to be happening this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at WD Hill Recreation Center. It's the Dia de Comunidad and I just want to encourage folks to come out and celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month.
Thank you so much. Looking to my left now, Councilwoman Jose Hyman.
Hi, good afternoon to my colleagues. Good afternoon to the residents of Durham. I want to just kind of do a special shout out for World Teacher Day today. You know, as someone who's a professor at North Carolina Central and have done this for the last 18 years at Shaw University here and all my other places I do adjunct work out, I don't take for granted the fact that I have the opportunity to cultivate the next generation of minds. I really, really have a passion about it and even prior to me becoming a city councilperson have had just a passion for education, for youth and for mentoring and have been awarded several awards, over 15, but one that I'm very, very proud of is being the 2021, I think it was 2021, I've got that, North Carolina Central University Excellence in Teaching. So I beat out everybody for that award. Also, 2017, the Spectacular Woman of the Year for Education, which is a Durham magazine and a lot of other accolades. So even before me coming on city council, that is things that I was passionate about because, again, why I can sit here is because people wrap services around me, people make sure they educated me. And I had really good mentors, you know, mentors sometimes that didn't look like me, a David Goldstein, a Dr. De Petras, a Dr. Danny, that saw something in me and really pushed me to get that education. So, again, World Teachers Day, let's big up all of our teachers in Durham, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jose Hyman. Any other announcements? Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a request for my colleagues to excuse me from our work session on November 21st. It's on that, it's on the Tuesday because Thanksgiving is on the Thursday. I'm going to be leaving town a little bit earlier that week with my family and would request to be excused from that work session. Thank you.
All right, I'm ready to entertain a motion.
So move.
Moved and by Councilwoman Williams, seconded by Councilwoman Freeman. All those in favor of signing, aye. Aye. All those opposed have the same right, hearing none. Hope you have a great trip that night.
Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and colleagues. Great to see everyone. I have been enjoying, I enjoyed National Night Out, several occasions this past week and it's fun to just see everybody coming together. I think that it's a moment that can remind us of the importance of relationships. And so, really appreciate the folks coming together, several organizations and community residents. Also, week without driving, it's been actually really fun and I apologize that I have been rotted without a helmet. That's not a good example, but I do love getting around on a scooter and our buses are well-equipped. And the train, if you need to go to Raleigh or Cary, it's about 15 minutes to, it's about 20 minutes, I believe, to Cary and it's about 29 minutes to Raleigh and it's seven bucks one way. And we have about six, five or six trains a day that you can get on back and forth. So I've been sort of posting about that and invite others to, even if it's just a day, give it a shot. All right, it's quite eye-opening and you'll see parts of our city that you probably wouldn't see if you were just driving everywhere. I wanted to read the formal announcement now that we've agreed on dates regarding the SCAD Task Force. I'll put my glasses on because I'm half blind here. Durham City Council SCAD Task Force Special Meetings, Public Meeting Notice. The Durham City Council has approved the formation of a SCAD Simplifying Code for Affordable Development Task Force to convene a series of three special meetings. The purpose is to engage participants in community forums on the proposed SCAD amendments. It will be here at City Hall on the second floor in the committee room. We will have these on the following dates, October 24th at, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., Wednesday, October 25th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. and Friday, October 27th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Councilmember Freeman and I will lead the task force. Local academic subject matter experts include Professor Dr. Danielle Spurlock from UNC Chapel Hill and Professor Dr. Cage Hours from Duke University and Professor Dr. Zafon R. Wilson from NCCU. Due to technology limitations, in the committee room, virtual speakers are not possible. Limited space for in-person public comment will be available in the committee room. Written public comment will be accepted at any time at city.clerk@durhamnc.gov. The SCAD Task Force meetings will be livestreamed on YouTube. It is not expected that a quorum of the city council will attend the SCAD Task Force Special Meetings. No official business will be transacted and no actions will be taken by the council. If you have questions about the special meetings, please contact the city clerk. Diana Schreiber at 919-560-4166, extension 12266, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Looking forward to engaging. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams, and I want to act to Councilwoman Freeman.
I was just going to just add a couple of updates. I know when I wrote that, it was prior to the city, to our mayor adding Mayor Pro Tem to the meetings and so we do need to make sure we notice it and make sure that it's available to folks. And then, just noting that Dr. Zafon Williams will not be able to attend. He's had some health concerns and so he will not be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Councilwoman Freeman. As Mayor Pro Tem has just learned about that in the last 10 minutes, including the public announcement, but he's always, he's always ready to able. And our, we will be there basically to try to help facilitate if necessary. So we want, I'm so pleased with Councilwoman Williams and Councilwoman, Councilwoman Freeman on there, taking the lead on this and they have been doing quite well.
So it's not expected, but possible.
Yeah, so to our clerk, we will have a possible quorum there. We'll be in the background, we'll just be there if needed. It's in very capable hands and they've been moving along really good with this. I think they got all the letters out. So if you were a speaker that had signed up on the night where the matter was continued, you still have the opportunity to speak in a smaller session as well as, at some point, I'm sure it will come back before the council. But this is a work that they're about to embark on to make sure that people understand when we talk about SCAD, what that actually means. So thank you to you both and thank you to Mayor Pro Tem for always being available to step in at the last minute. So I too want to say congratulations to the city of Durham for our National Night Out. I was out and about. We have a beautiful city and it's always good to go out and see neighbors mingling, lots of food, lots of food, lots of music, lots of neighbors, law enforcement, always good to see the men and women in blue. I always thank them for escorting me around and all of us around. They always do a fantastic job of being engaging, not only in the cars but out of the cars as well. So I have a lot of fun when we do our National Night Out. So thank you to our chief and to your staff for a wonderful evening. It's one of those evenings that I always look forward to as we do things around the city. Our Sheriff Department was out there, so, and a lot of community partners as well. You have a table set up of about five or six different community partners at every set, every stop that I made. So it is a well-attended and well-received event for the city of Durham. I do want you to highlight for your calendars, November 16th and 17th here in the city of Durham. We, and stay tuned, we're going to have a business summit over at the Durham County Library. It will be a two-day event focusing on those who would like to think about starting a business and how do you go from that? It's going to be, we have a couple of community partners on there. We have three co-chairs who are leading that effort, some within the city, some without the city. The SBA from, the federal SBA will be coming in as well. So we're going to have a full two-day of events and we will be focusing, it will be for everybody, but we are going to place special emphasis on three populations, our neighbors with disabilities, our seniors, as well as our neighbors who may have some justice involvement. We want to highlight them with some special seminars and presentations to get folk in the mindset that, you know, you can do all things from wherever circumstance you come from in Durham. So we're just going to highlight some of those populations that you may not traditionally know that there are things out there that you can do and become your own, on your own boss. So I'm looking forward to that myself as well at some point in life. So with that being said, we will now turn to our priority items by our city manager and we have our deputy city manager, Mr. Johnson, sitting with us today as our city manager is on travel for the city.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor O'Neil, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton and city council members. I have two priority items for your consideration today. Agenda item number six, 2023 Request to Carryover Funding from Fiscal Year 2022-23 to Fiscal Year 2023-24. Amend the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget of the Capital Improvement Plan Project Ordinances and Internal Service Fund Spending Plans. This item includes a presentation and we have that for about 20 minutes. Agenda item number 13, Proposed Amendment to Lease Between the City of Durham and Cannibal Incorporated Doing Business as Indian Monsoon at Unit 100 and Unit 421 at Morgan-Risby Parking Garage. This item is being referred back to the General Services Department. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You have now heard the priority items from the city manager and I'm prepared to entertain a motion to accept those priority items.
So move.
Second.
We've had a motion by Councilwoman Williams, seconded by Councilwoman Johnson. All those in favor, would you sign by signing aye. Aye. All those opposed have the same right, hearing none. That motion passes unanimously and I now turn to City Attorney Ray Bird for any priority items she may have.
Madam Mayor, just a quick point of order. Question, do we need to suspend the rules to vote on that? I think for both of these, we're voting and I know that the city attorney mentioned in our last work session that we shouldn't vote on matters in our work session. So I just wanted to make sure we were following protocol.
We just voted on her priority items, I believe that's, and what?
An excused absence.
An excused absence. Any problems you see with that, Attorney Ray Bird?
No, the council routinely votes on absences without suspending the rules. It's merely a procedural matter.
And we'll turn to you for your priority items if you have any.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Middleton and members of the council, the city attorney's office has no priority items.
Thank you, Attorney Ray Bird. We now turn to our clerk, Clerk Schreiber, for any priority items she may have.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city clerk's office has no priority items today.
Thank you so much. We will now turn to reading our entire agenda into, for this afternoon, for the people's business and we will begin with our administrative consent items. Item one, Durham City County Environmental Affairs Board Appointment. Number two is the Durham Convention and Visitors' Bureau Discover Durham Appointment. Item three, Participatory Budgeting Steering Committee Appointment. Item four is the Human Relations Committee Appointment. Item five, Approval of City Council Minutes. Item six is going to be a presentation. It is a Request to Carryover Funding from Fiscal Year 2022-23 to Fiscal Year 2023-24. Amend the Fiscal Year 2023-24 Budget, Other Capital Improvement Plan Project Ordinances and Internal Service Fund Spending Plans. Item seven is a New Position Classification, Associate Attorney. Item eight is the Durham Comprehensive Plan 2023. Number nine is a Service Subscription Agreement with Sprout Social, Inc. For Social Media Management Platform. Item 10, Increase in Authority for Construction Contract with Bar Construction Company, Inc. For Athletic Court Renovations, Piney Wood Park Pickleball Project.
Madam Mayor, I want to pull item 10 for purposes of an advisory to the staff. It appears as though the attached memo is duplicated from the preceding item. The memo for it is a duplicate of the Sprout Social, Inc. in my packet. So I don't know that I can engage in any, just with an advisory. So I don't know if we need to revisit it or you needed to attach that for us to take it at some... I haven't had time to read it if it's been fixed recently. Just want to, that's, that advisory, we can proceed. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Do you, you want me to pull it, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, mine isn't fixed, so...
Okay, we'll pull that for you. All right. Item 11 is the Contract Amendment Number One for Geotechnical Engineering and Materials Testing Services with A1 Consulting, Inc. for the Public Works Operations Center Project. Item 12, we're going to pull that, we have a couple of speakers for the construction contract with Pineum Construction, Inc. for downtown trash compactor project at 315 Holland Street.
I'd like to pull that too as well.
All right, thank you. Item 12. Item 13 has been referred back and that item was the Proposed Amendment to Lease Between City of Durham and Cannibal, Inc. Doing Business as Indian Monsoon at Unit 100 and Unit 421 of the Morgan-Risby Parking Garage and that's been referred back to staff. Item 14 is the Proposed Lease with Beyond Da Corners LLC Doing Business as Mia Barrio Nutrition at the Morgan-Risby Parking Garage, Unit 103. Item 15 is a Consultant Contract for Classification and Compensation Study. 16, the First Amendment to Contract with SHI International Corporation for Microsoft Enterprise Software Licensing Agreement. Turn now to our public hearings. Item 17 is the Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment, Changes Related to the Comprehensive Plan. Item 18 is the Zoning Map Change, Avington Harris Farms. 19 is the Zoning Map Change, Hillsborough Road Coca-Cola Bowling Site. And item 20 is the Zoning Map Change, 2610 South Miami Boulevard. We don't have any supplemental items, so, let me see, I just got it there on the agenda. All right, that concludes the reading of our agenda and I believe we have, it's pulled items, item six and item 12.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to rescind that pull of item six. I'm going to just defer to my colleagues' expertise on their reading of the matter, so I'll pull it.
Okay, so we'll just have one pulled item, item 12?
I'm sorry, yeah, 12, my bad.
You want to pull, you want to...
I don't want to pull 10 anymore. It's 10.
It's 10.
I'm sorry, you don't want to pin, okay, we don't want to pull 10, so what other pull items we have now?
Six and 12.
Six. Six is a presentation and 12 is the compact. Alrighty, everybody out there, okay, we're all on the same page then. All right, so at this time, we will focus in on our citizens' matters and then we will return back to our pull items. We have three citizens who are here today in person to speak with us. We'll start, you will have three minutes apiece. We have Mr. James Chavis, Mr. Rafi Zadi and Ms. Jackie Waxstaff, who will come at this time and have three minutes apiece. And then we'll be back to our pulled items right after that.
Good afternoon to the mayor and other city council members and folks out in the audience. My citizen concern is item number seven about Assistant Attorney. Well, we don't have attorney up there now, so why do we need assistant? Okay? Because that assistant, that attorney up there has no right to come to the citizens and ask, answer any of our questions. So what are we going to pay somebody to help her not to do her job? Okay? That's what she asking. Asking them to give her someone to help her not to do her job. And that's not fair to the taxpayers. Is she going to give this person to the community for us to have somebody to work with, to keep her doing her job? She's not going to do that. That's what we need. We need attorney to be able for the citizen of Durham to go to because we don't know all the changes come about nothing. We don't have no attorney representing us and that's what we need. So number seven is a bunch of belongings. Because if we get attorney, assistant attorney, what happened to the money that was asked for the other folks to get their raise? How can you give her what she want and don't give these people what they want? Thank you.
Ms. Waxstaff and Mr. Rafi Zadi, either one. They're not numbered, so however the order that you want to come at this time, three minutes, please, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. I too have concerns about number six. It's number seven with the Assistant Associate Attorney position that is being asked for. I would have loved to seen what dollar amount would have been attached to that position, but that's not in that information that we get as citizens, since it's going to be the citizens' tax dollars that's going to pay for this. And I too have concerns, like Mr. Chavis, that we've been getting some real shabby work from our city attorney and these people that have been coming down here, your lowest-paid employees, asking for to be made whole and to see this on this agenda when y'all have not even made them whole and y'all having this discussion today about these three steps or three different plans to try to make them whole. Now, I'm very skeptical about that because it's interesting that these plans to make them whole won't happen until after the election is over. It almost seems like they're waiting to see if y'all actually helped them get out of office like this one right here and he not become the mayor. And so if that happens, then y'all may never be whole because they would be angry and they probably would not vote in your favor. So I'm just, I have a lot of concerns about this process that y'all are using and how you have to go through all these processes now just to make them whole when there was no process used, when you tried to take away Ms. Hyman's right to be a council member up here. There's no process used when y'all are doing things that you want to do and you don't follow any procedures. You got a 12-year-old procedural plan that has not been updated, but now you want to follow the book and want to follow processes to make these sanitations whole. It's just problematic, but we'll see after the election what happens, whether or not you'll be whole and then you can make your decision about them then. But whatever you do, don't vote for her.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lane, distinguished deus, councilbody. I'm going to take a few... I'm going to take a few seconds, because it's very disturbing that from public officials, we don't hear in the public, we just lost a young man in MacDougal almost 30-some hours ago after a night on crime, and nobody seemed to want to mention that, 10 years old almost. Anyway, I'm here today pursuant to talking to the SBI, State Bureau Investigation official, asking the city attorney, Ray Bird, that she exists me in my exhaustion of administrative remedies, because what I am seeking through my discovery process, I know how about 20 business days before I can file in the federal court or the state court. I want facts and information that will better prepare me to present my request first as exhaustion of administrative remedies to the State Bureau of Investigation, because what I want to examine is the procedural rules regarding central or public officials such as Councilman Harmon. I have one original copy of the statement from the District Attorney, Satana D. Bird, that I don't think is sufficient for my remedies that I'm trying to, you know, discover through this process, because the statute of limitations is closing on me. And since there are so many diverse challenges to the Freedom of Information Act, I am demanding immediately today that the city attorney give me some of the information that I need as a citizen to pursue these matters. It disturbs me that one council member can be exonerated, but there's a cloud over the other three. If something wrong with that State Bureau of Investigation process that the citizens need to know about, and I intend, with all the legal ability that I have as pro se, to find out to the best of my knowledge why we can't change those procedures since been here since December, what, 2012, and they're still using it? Any one of us on council could be actually removed just on an allegation, or in the endo, I just don't like you for not voting with me. Those things must be checked. Now, if they're not checked, I'm going to pursue this matter, because it disturbs me. I don't think nobody should be exonerated just because the SBI say they didn't conspire in collusion. Something happened with Gerard Edens. Gerard Edens, the developer, talked to somebody pursuant to her being censured, and I want to find out. Thank you very much.
Those are all the cards that I have for citizens, matter, attorney, I'm sorry, Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for the record, for public consumption, we are, we have an attorney that's retiring, a senior attorney, and we are going to, that's going to create a vacancy in the office, and we'll, all of us have this information, so just don't want misinterpretations to be out in the public consumption unchecked. This is creating a classification that would allow us to hire another attorney to make the city attorney's office whole after the retirement of a senior attorney, and it will allow an opportunity to hire younger, less experienced folks, which would actually save us money. So I just wanted to put the facts out there. Thank you.
Thank you, and I wanted to also give Attorney Ray Bird a chance to respond. We did have notification that Attorney Donald Toole will be retiring in December, I believe, and so she has to fill that position. We cannot not fill positions, and I think she has some moving parts in her shop that she's going to be doing, but I will let her speak to that issue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really don't have much to add beyond what Councilmember Williams has already stated. Donald Toole will be incredibly missed by the city attorney's office, and saying that there has been shabby work coming from the city attorney's office, I will say, is an indictment of the nine other attorneys who work in that office, who have worked very hard, and they do provide very good service for the city of Durham, and that is all that I have to say.
Attorney Ray Bird, we will now turn to and review our pulled items, beginning with, as we've had two pulled items, but one is actually a presentation that we will here later, item six. We turn to item twelve, who I believe has been pulled by Councilman Williams, and we have a couple of speakers on that. That item is titled, "Construction Contract with Pineum Construction, Inc. for Downtown Trash Compactor Project at 315 Holland Street." Councilman Williams, we'll let you go first, and then we'll let Mr., I believe Mr. Ellison has an appointment that he's trying to get to. He's actually a speaker on an item, so if I could allow him to go first, followed by Mr. John Rosala, you will each have three minutes apiece to address the council at this time. Thank you.
I thank you so much, Mayor and City Council members, and thank you all for your service, because it's not easy what you do. So just because I'm not, because not everybody knows me that well, I just wanted to give you a little bit of my own background, and I'll be really quick. So I've lived in Durham since 1974, actually since 1973, with only about two years away from Durham during that whole time period. I mean, 1978, I had a co-op art gallery at five points above what was then the Plaza Restaurant, and in 1996, I purchased the former Palms Restaurant building and turned that into affordable artist studios, and it's been providing affordable artist studios continuously since that time, 1996, so almost 30 years. I've served on the Durham Arts Council Board off and on, both as president and other positions for 25 years or so, been the chair, and also a member of the NCCU Art Museum Board for like 12 years. I was on the historic, the Durham Historic Preservation Commission for approximately 12 years. So I too give service to the community, and I'm fairly familiar with historic preservation. I'm speaking today at the Historic Preservation, at Preservation North Carolina's Annual Conference here in town. I'm speaking on disability access for historic properties, which is the hat I am mostly wearing these days, which is disability access for people, and I appreciate Mayor O'Neill's mention of disability and when she was making comments, and there's a lot more that we all can do as a community. I would love to see Durham at the forefront as a leader in disability access and not just a follower. But today's item is about a trash compactor that's proposed for right behind what is the building that has M Sushi and M Coco Restaurant, which is adjacent to my building, and will it actually extend behind my building as well? That's a terrible place for it. No, and I'm especially concerned about the process that brought it to this point, and I've emailed all of you, so if you go back through your emails, you'll see some of the history there, but I only learned about the project, which was already a steamroller, hard to stop, because I saw a bunch of folks with clipboards behind the building one day and asked, well, what's going on? And it received a COA, which I think was beyond the authority to be given as an administrative COA, so there was no Preservation Commission notice that went out to adjacent property owners. All of the adjacent property owners are against this project, so I hope we can at least push this forward until there's a lot more vetting of other opportunities that happen. So thank you. I think that buzzer must have been telling me the hook is here. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ellison.
Good afternoon, I'll keep this brief. So I first heard about this product, I'm John Warosilla, I own some of the property around this proposed site. Dan was the first person that dialed me into what was happening at this location. We then explored what else was, how it came to be, what else was possible with several city staff. Candidly, I don't think we ever got a very good answer as to how this was arrived at, and then I come to be here because I saw from Dan that this was on the agenda for today for awarding the construction contract. I'd left my last conversations with city staff with the understanding that we were going to better understand how this came to be, what other potential solutions existed, and all the neighbors who had now been alerted to this process and what was happening would be able to provide some input as to why we think there were better solutions available to us. And it could very well be that this is the best solution when you go down the list and you listen to everybody and understand the dynamics of what's happening there, but that process never occurred, and so the frustration, I think, is that we're about to award a construction contract that will impact, I think adversely, the populated side of that site. If you know the site at all, it's behind the armory, or I guess south of the armory. There's a restaurant, M Coco, that has outdoor seating, which will now be abutting a trash compactor. Dan's property, a property on the corner, which has just been purchased where Speedy Q is, that wants to have an outdoor area. So what is effectively the populated side of that courtyard or parking area will now be served by a parking dumpster, whereas I think the north section of it would pull it away from where the people are. I think there's also an idea about locating it to the east of the armory where the dumpsters currently reside, so it strikes me there is alternatives here, and not knowing how this one was arrived at is the source of the frustration. So we're asking basically, just can we convene, get around this, figure out how to solve it? And at the end of the day, if this is where it needs to go, that's where it needs to go, then it needs to happen in as good a way as possible. So that was our, that was our presentation and what we were concerned about, so thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn it back to Councilman Williams at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just going to just provide an opportunity for Deputy City Manager Johnson to just provide any like high-level detail about how we got to where we are, the options we're taking, just for public consumption.
Thank you. There were a few, several comments that were made, that we have several staff members from different departments to respond to, so we have General Services, Solid Waste, and our Planning Department about the process, the structure, and so I would ask those persons to come up and answer the questions that are related to their particular department and their environment in the project.
Good afternoon, Mayor members of council, Stacy Poston, City of Durham General Services Department. Back in 2019, the Solid Waste Department began discussing with downtown stakeholders what was going to happen regarding modernizing some of the trash containers that we had downtown. We were having trouble with, you know, infestation of creatures, and we were also having containers on the streets and on sidewalks, and so there was a discussion about how to create containers where we could have a site that multiple users could utilize, and so this project's incarnation started back in 2019 and has been progressing perhaps a little more slowly than we had anticipated due to some of the COVID and some staffing turnover, but this is sort of where this project started. We have looked at the parking lot site that is owned by the county to try to figure out if there's another way to configure the use of that site. We are bound by stormwater pipes, water pipes, easements that would be required. There are alleys on three sides of that, and we also need to be able to move the solid waste vehicles in to be able to empty the container, so there are some constraints around that site that limit where we could put the containment area on this property.
And I think there was a question for planning around process.
Yeah, Bode Brinsky, Plan Department. A site plan was reviewed verifying the location, as Stacy just alluded to, in terms of utilities and the ability for trucks to enter and access. So site plan was reviewed and approved for all that. In terms of the historic preservation and the COA, this is a site wall. It's considered site work and subsequently requires minor COA, which it did obtain, so it went through the necessary approval processes for historic preservation.
If you could speak just a little bit louder, I think we lost yet to trail in.
Yeah, the screening wall is considered site work, which requires a minor COA, which is reviewed and approved by staff, and that was obtained, so.
And I believe that Mr. Ellison had a specific request about this matter being delayed for you all to have further conversations. I indicated to them that I couldn't answer that, and that somebody in the, on the city staff side.
Yeah, I'll defer.
They would answer that question. In terms, I guess, long enough for them to understand or have a subsequent meeting with y'all, I think it's his request.
Sure, I think, you know, we are ready to award a construction contract. We feel like we have done a significant amount of due diligence on this site relative to the constraints. There's additionally, you know, stormwater runoff happening, sort of pooling at the armory side of this site. We also have inaccessible ADA parking spaces currently that do not connect to a sidewalk, so in addition to the improvements to the solid waste and having that be in a contained area, we are also getting other additional improvements to the site that, for the benefit of the community, and we, as I mentioned, have been doing sort of due diligence around this site and solutions for the 15 or so property owners who are using the solid waste containers in this vicinity for a number of years.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks to staff, and I want to thank residents, our neighbors, for coming and raising concerns, and this conversation was going to go this way wherever we put it, downtown. I haven't had, seen one of these projects where, you know, said, hey, yeah, put it here, but I think that the staff, in terms of, we didn't just throw a dart at the board just kind of randomly, there were a number of factors that went into the site location. Downtown is a unique place, because the commerce and business activity generates a lot of money, but it generates a lot of waste as well. It generates a lot of materials that come from the productive nature of downtown, and we, taking it somewhere outside of downtown isn't really an option for us as a city from an equity point of view, because that's what used to happen. We used to send our trash to other places. So as downtown is an economic engine for us, we also have to find ways to balance the output of downtown with the other kind of output that come from its activity, its commerce activities. So I appreciate the questions, but I know that the staff work really hard and to find the optimal place for this, and I would ask them if, you know, just echoing what the resident said, was there a list of other places and what type of metrics landed us at this place, just to kind of reiterate it in straightforward, plain layman's terms, layperson's terms?
Yes, Stacy Poston. So there are a number of locations downtown where we have solid waste containment areas, and so this one is within 100 feet of the current site, and so we need something in this vicinity, and there are very limited options of property that are owned by either the city or county that could serve this purpose.
Okay, thank you so much. I hope that's helpful. Thank you, staff, and thank you, colleagues, for your questions as well.
Any further comments on this issue?
Just real quick, the reason why I wanted to bring this up, just for, to compare the comments, the concerns with the actual comments, and also just making sure we have a watchful eye on any city work we do, just making sure folks are well communicated with on how it may or may not affect the business and the volume of the business. Thank you.
All right, we are now at our second pulled item, which also coincides with our presentation's item number six, which we have, is a pulled item, and it is also a presentation, and I believe the only presentation today, which is a request to carry out funding from fiscal year 2022, '23 to fiscal year 2023, '24, amend the fiscal year 2023, '24 budget, other capital improvement plan, project ordinances, and internal service fund spending plans, and we will turn this over to Ms. Christina Riordan. And we will turn this over to Ms. Christina Reardon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Proten, Members of Council, Christina Reardon, Budget and Management Services. And I am back today with you to follow up on our carryover item that we discussed at the last City Council work session. Just to recap where we are, so at the last City Council work session on September 21st, staff presented our carryover recommendation, which included a bonus recommendation for all full and part-time staff. At that work session, council discussed the recommendation and then directed the administration to develop three additional bonus proposals. So I will be presenting those today to you, but just some of the parameters that staff were using when we were developing those proposals, I just wanted to go over them. So the first was that bonuses included all full and part-time staff members, that we use area median income to tier the bonus amounts, that we would make sure that the lowest-paid employees received the highest bonuses, that the lowest bonus amount was equal to $500, and that the highest bonus amount would be close to or equal to $5,000, that part-time staff would receive a bonus of $1,000, which was part of the initial recommendation, and that the total cost of the bonuses would not exceed $6.5 million across all funds in the city. So I will be going over the bonus options with you today, but I wanted to just remind you of a few things before we get started. So we'll be discussing the three options, and as you are aware, in order to approve the bonuses, you will have to do a budget amendment, and that requires a budget ordinance amendment. And I just wanted to make you aware that in your packet today, I have provided budget ordinance amendments for all three of the options, as well as the city manager's option, which was in the original proposal that we presented at the 21st. If, after today's discussion, council is ready to make a decision, staff can bring the selected ordinance to the council meeting on October 16th for your approval. So this is just a reminder of the recommendation that you saw at the last work session. This was the city manager's recommendation, which had three tiers and included all full and part-time employees. There was a bonus for part-time employees of $1,000, and the cost in the general fund was $4.8 million, and the total cost overall was about $6.5 million. I wanted to just spend a little bit of time talking about area median income, and so just to provide some context for the options that you're going to be seeing. So as you may remember from math class, the median is the middle of a list of numbers. And so area median income is the household income for the middle households in a given region. And the Department of Housing and Urban Development calculates AMI for every area in the country. And these estimates are used to calculate various income levels, which are then defined as percentages of median family income, and they vary by the number of people in a household. So since we don't know the household number of every employee that we're going to be doing these options on, we have chosen one person as the household. So just when you're looking at these, that is the household number that we're using for these AMI numbers. And so that gives you five tiers of AMI that you'll be looking at today. The first is 60% AMI, which is $42,480, 80% AMI, which is $56,650, 100% AMI, which is $70,810, 120% AMI, which is $84,970, and 150% AMI, which is $106,210. And these are the most recent numbers from the spring of 2023. So these are the three options that we have for council to discuss. As you kind of look at the options, you'll see that the first row in each of the options are those AMI numbers, and then the second row are the corresponding salary amounts. So you have five tiers of AMI, which leads to six groups of employees, and then there's a part-time group as well, too. So all the options that you see today spread out the bonuses from the highest being 5,000 to the lowest being 500. And we've tried to provide you with options that have some different distinctions and then also some different results. So option one has the largest distinction among the ranges of employees. It has the largest number of employees receiving $5,000, but it also has the largest number of employees receiving $500, and then some employees will be receiving $3,500. This option does not provide for a $1,000 bonus for part-time employees, and that was partly because of the large number of full-time staff that would be receiving a $500 bonus. In order to reduce the disparity that might exist in some departments, we have presented an option that preserves $500 for part-time staff in this option. And the second option is option two, and in this option, we have one group receiving $5,000, and then, and that's the first group, which is the under 60% AMI. And that's the only group that receives 5,000 in this option two. This option reduces the number of employees that receive $500 as well, too. So you have two groups of employees that will receive $500 as opposed to three in the first option. It does increase the number of employees. It also reduces the number of, or the option amount in the tier below the 500, so that 100% to 120% is increased from 500 to 2,750. And it reduces the group that's 80% to 100% from 3,500 to 2,750. And then, of course, the option that is 60% to 80% is reduced from 5,000 to 4,000. And I should say that all of these options, you can see the total cost is under that $6.5 million. So option three, this option, like option one, has one group, the 60% AMI, that receives the $5,000, and it only has one group that receives the $500 bonus. So this kind of spreads out the bonus the most. Part-time receive $1,000 in this option. And for this option, the spread among the groups is less dramatic, which means you might have less distinction among employees in different departments. And I think this is kind of important to point out when you're making a decision, because employees sometimes are in the same position but might be in different groups in these bonus options. So you could have someone who is in the same position in one department but be in, you know, one could be at 60% and one could be at 80%. And so an example of that might be, you could have the fire department where you might have an option where you would have a firefighter, especially in the first option, who might receive a $5,000 bonus, and then a fire driver who might be in that higher option would receive a $500 bonus. So this option three tries to reduce some of that. So this next slide is just something that we had heard at the council meetings, and there was some discussion about a bonus for individuals who earn under $75,000. This option was not considered, or I shouldn't say option, I said this particular scenario was not considered as an option because it cost more than the $6.5 million. This option would cost about $8.3 million across funds, but we did want to provide it to you just so you would have it as a reference, and we could give it to you for more information. I do have a slide with all three options on it so that you can kind of see that, and we can use it as a point of discussion. But before we do that, I just wanted to move on to what we think are probably the ideal next steps. So I know that I'll leave time for some questions and discussion, but I think the ideal would be if City Council selects a bonus option today, it could be adopted as part of the carryover item on the 10/16 City Council meeting. And if City Council was to approve that option on 10/16, employees could receive the bonus on November 3rd, in their November 3rd paycheck. And I just wanted to kind of, as a reminder, remind you that on the agenda today, we have the class and compensation study, and that will be taking place ideally starting in October, and then the results will be available for the FY '25 budget process. So that is the information I have for you today. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. We do have some speakers here that we will call at this particular time. We have several on the internet as well. Each will be given three minutes apiece. We have Mr. James Chavis, Mr. Brian Graves, Ms. Christina Servat, or Servert. Jacqueline Wagstaff are the persons that I have signed up here to speak in person. And then we have three speakers on the internet, Ms. Messer, thank you, Ms. Lori Messer, Ms. Annette Hoffer, and we have Ms. Servert, but I think she, Severt, is actually here in person. All right, we'll take them in that order.
James Chavis, a resident of Durham, and I've just seen this and just got a whiff of it. I don't know how long y'all have seen it, how long y'all got a whiff of it. So this is how the city works. Community folks don't have no voices, because it's just been proven, and dates are already been given to accept this and approve this, but we citizens that's here today seeing it, but what about other citizens of Durham who have not seen it or had the opportunity to express themselves? This is what we've been talking about. Y'all claiming y'all not doing stuff under the table behind us, but how do we know unless we hear the seed that this can be voted on today or sent by the 16th and given out by the 30th? I know people want their money. I'm not denying y'all the opportunity, but what I want you to understand, this not only goes for this, this goes for everything the city of Durham do to the citizens of Durham. We do not have a voice. Tell us to come up here and speak, but the decision has already been made by staff and given to them so they can approve it, and that's not, should be not working. One man said last night that everything that comes before y'all, it should have been coming before the citizens first, and let us have a voice so that when it comes back to y'all, y'all can understand where we coming from. But when you continue to do it like this, we don't have no voice. You all just telling us to accept what y'all want us to accept and let y'all do what y'all want to do. This is a bunch of mess, and I'm telling you for yourself, why you gonna give 85 to 106 and more, $2,000 or more, when you, a bonus, when you won't even pay these less folks that they never regular pay? So what kind of mess is that? Giving them more money and then gonna give them a raise on top of that? Think about that. Think about how y'all taking and wasting taxpayer money to give. This is not fair, and this should not be accepted until it comes out into the community and let peoples of the community have a very voice of this. Thank you.
Mr. Graves, Ms. Servert, and Ms. Wagstaff.
Thank you, everyone, for having me, allowing me to speak. With the Fire Department, I'm one of the fire investigators, tenured here since 2017. Just want to speak very briefly on some of the concerns of pay comping class and want to give some approximate numbers. The approximate employees of the City of Durham Fire Department is approximately 450 people. And in that 450 people, there's a union that represents approximately a little over 200. And the union has had a voice before the council and is doing phenomenal work on pay. However, there's a silent majority that I represent, and I don't, I'm not in the union. I'm not a union member, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the union. I'm speaking on behalf of members that have been, not always have a voice, not stand up here before the council and speak. There's a proposal that was sent by the union that, in these three options, as was noted, does offer disparity amongst tiers of pay, tiers of people within the department. Just want to make sure that as we move forward, as we look at this pay, look at this comping class, they will understand there are approximately 250, we'll look at the numbers, people that are not represented by the union, that if we go with some of the proposals that are given, I know there was one that was emailed out that was not favorable by all union members, that looked at a lower tier, that would cause, as the example was given, a firefighter would achieve more than a driver, for example. And one of the things that we have been fighting for, for all, is to have an equal share. And I'm saying before the council, if we do a pay option that will cause that level of, it would decimate morale when you have some lower tiers and some others that would be slighted based on a bonus program, if it's so agreed to. So I say that we need to look at it in the most fairest manner possible, because everyone deserves a fair shake, everyone deserves to be compensated. And there's a lot of people that have a lot of various needs for compensation that need to be addressed by this council. And I'm not here to diminish that or to say that it's not important. But one thing that drives people to leave any employer is morale. And if we make a decision that will further decimate morale, you can't pay people enough to stay. Thank you.
Good afternoon again, Madam Mayor, council people. I have one question right now I want to ask, and maybe the attorney or the deputy manager can answer. Are City Council members considered part-time staff? And if so, would they receive a bonus from that $36,000 that y'all now receive after you got your $10,000 raise? Would like to know that, to see which one of these options you would actually support if this is true. And I know Mr. Williams always liked to correct things and make it plain, so you probably know and could answer that. I'm just one of those people that believe that the way this is going, I don't have much hope. I'm hoping that they will give you what you need to make you whole, but I don't see it with this crew. I really don't. And I'm a firm believer that if you keep banging your head against the wall and getting the same results, why are you coming down here? I think the results that you're gonna get, they're gonna give you some dissertations and some long speeches after everybody speak, and it's gonna sound good. It's really gonna sound good, because, you know, two of them trying to, one trying to be the mayor, one trying to return her seat. She told you if she gets, if you help her get reelected, she'll be the fourth vote. Well, she had an opportunity to be the fourth vote in July and three other times. So remember that. Don't forget this. And even if they give you one of these options, don't forget, these are the same people. And even if they give you one of these options, don't forget, these are the same people that have not made you whole and had the opportunity to do it multiple times, multiple times. And this election should not be the perimeter of whether or not they get reelected. It should, it should be just what it is. Get your money and vote them out.
Ms. Christina Savert, please forgive me if I'm mispronouncing your name.
No worries. It's Christina Severt, and I just wanted to say that what I'm about to say is out of respect for Durham. I'm gonna be moving here sometime next year. I'm living in Cary right now. It's nice to see you, the mayor, especially in person. But anyway, my name is Christina, and I am a member of Socialist Alternative and Worker Strike Back. I'm here to support Durham sanitation workers today, whose victory of any kind inspires the entire working class. You've shown courage by taking action when those in power ignored you. Local politicians focus on bureaucratic nonsense like, you know, average, medium income. What does that have to do with cost of living nowadays? They're not tied. They could talk about average, medium income, as they've sort of demonstrated, they can kind of pay people what they want now, can't they? They refuse to pay a fair wage. They've hired scavs and contractors who wouldn't work under the conditions and pay that you would for long term either. They left you no choice but to strike. I know that decision wasn't easy, and many couldn't participate due to the financial hardship, but your actions have won bonuses for sanitation and other city workers. Labor laws here are unjust, some of the worst in the country, if you look it up. Breaking them is a powerful tradition. For those who say, you know, oh, it is legal, well, I'd like to comment that those laws were created in the Jim Crow era and are, you know, fundamentally racist and inequitable to begin with. So let's not use those laws as our starting point. So yet, we can't wait for politicians to act. Worker Strike Back fights for $25 minimum wage nationally and more, and we're just all very inspired by you. And for anyone who's interested in labor struggles such as these, you could check out On Strike. It's a YouTube channel, and we talk about fights like yours going on throughout the country right now, like KCBG for Amazon. There's a bunch of hospital workers, 75,000 of them, on strike in different parts of the country, and you're doing what you need to do to, to set a precedent for fair pay. You know, they're talking over here about commerce in the city and how much wealth and money it creates, and yet, you know, they were just talking about that. You need people to come and clean up that trash. Well, pay people to do it. Y'all deserve to live in the city that you serve, and, you know, we could talk about medium income all day, all we want, but y'all need to be paid enough to live here. So thank y'all for all the courage, and there's people like me that look up to you, even if there's others that look down on you just for the very work you do. And I always admire that you do your jobs with pride, and just thank y'all.
I believe the names that I called out from the Internet speakers are resource persons. Do we have any else, any other speakers out there on the Internet? Okay, I'll bring Ms. Reardon back up for any questions the council may have at this time. Looking to my left. Looking to my right. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Javier.
Thank you. Good afternoon, good to see you. Just really quick, in the memo for the part-time workers, option three listed 500, but in the PowerPoint slide, it listed 1,000, so I just was confused.
It should be 1,000.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So that may be just a mistake.
That's what you said, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, it is. No, the calculation is for 1,000 for option three. It's only option one where it's 500, so that may be a mistake in the memo.
I appreciate that. Great. Madam Mayor, I have one other question, I'm sorry. Christina, we could suspend rules today, correct, since we have the ordinance language, or we cannot, we have to wait till October?
I mean, I believe that it's council's decision whether you suspend the rules or not, but yes, as far as having an ordinance to vote on, you do have that in your packet.
Thank you.
The clerk has indicated there are two speakers, so I'm just letting them know that we are, we will come back to you after the questions from Councilwoman Javier.
Madam Mayor, that's all. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. We have Mr. George Baker, and we also have, I believe, one person on the Internet, Mr. Hughes. We'll take our speaker here first. And if there's anybody else, please sign up at this particular time. Last call for speakers in the audience or on the Internet. Thank you.
Good afternoon. So I'm not a public speaker, but I want to say it because nobody don't want to say it. But you asked a question about $5,000 and how we came up with that. We came up with that because we feel that it's reasonable to get us out of our circumstances, our financial bonds. Like, the truth of the matter is, what you guys don't know, it's a handful of workers in my department that are homeless, that's living in hotels with their wife and their children. Now, at the same time, you know, it might be an honorable thing to work for the city. You know, when people around the city, they see us and they say, you know, you work for the city, you got a good job, but that's not the case, you know, because we don't make good money, you know? So I just want y'all to know, like, if you was, you a man, you know, how would you feel if your wife and your children, you know, living in a hotel and you gotta go back to them, and, you know, they know you work for the city, but this is all you could do, you know? And they don't want to come up here and say anything, so I gotta speak for them. Imagine, imagine y'all women in hotels, and, you know, your husband worked for the city. Again, you know, you gotta look at her every day, and you gotta look at them children every day. So I just want y'all to know that. Those are the facts, and that's all I gotta say.
Mr. Hughes, if you're on the Internet, you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, and I just want to start off by commending the gentleman who just spoke for his courage and his transparency. And I want to say, it is the greatest shame that this city has workers who cannot afford to live in our city and who are unhoused and have to resort to living in hotels or in cars, and we should be ashamed of ourselves, and you all should be ashamed of yourselves as elected officials to have an environment where that is the case. And instead of asking the workers, how did they come up with the $5,000 bonus and what was the methodology? I want to turn the question on you, members of the council. What was the methodology behind the $6.5 million cap that you say you aren't willing to go above, other than Gillian Johnson arbitrarily throwing that number out at the last work session? That's the real question that we need answered, and I hope one of the council members can answer that question for us today. I don't normally like to criticize the city manager's office or city staff, but as somebody who's worked in city government for a number of years and was responsible for presenting budget and other recommendations to leadership and legislators for approval, it really was disingenuous and inadequate for the manager's office at the previous work session to not come to the table with an evaluation of the option that was requested by the workers, which was $5,000 for all employees making $75,000 and under. Even if that option was not feasible financially, which we know it is, they still should have presented that option and the pros and cons so that the members of the council can make a decision as to whether that is something that they want to approve. And to have that option, again, not presented with a budget amendment, I think is a disservice to the workers who have requested time and time again for you all to evaluate what it would mean to offer $5,000 bonuses to all employees making $75,000 or less. I'll just end by saying that Dr. Martin Luther King was assassinated for doing what? How many of y'all know in the room? For standing with sanitation workers. And here we are in 2023, where we have workers who are pleading, who are putting their lives on the line in one of the most dangerous jobs, asking for the bare minimum, and you all can't seem to find the courage to do that. Shame on you, members of the council and voters. I hope that you show up in this election and vote those out who don't stand by our city workers. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Hey, City Council, how y'all doing? I ain't gonna be up here long. I just want to point out a fact, you know, as far as sanitation workers go. I don't know about other departments in the city, but we are the lowest-paid municipality, one of the lowest-paid municipalities in North Carolina. So Durham in sanitation, start-out pay is $39,141. Burlington starts out at $40,500. Greensboro starts out at 43. Greenville, 41. Raleigh, 41117. Rocky Mount, $40,516. And Charlotte at 45 and 760. And I'm just trying to figure out, like, how is this possible? And back to the reference of how we came up with the 5,000, we was really trying to be conservative. We really wanted to ask for 75, but we wanted to just be like, okay. In my mind, I was like, we ask for 75, they gonna give us 5. We ask for 5, they gonna give us 2 or 3, you know? So, so we was just like, you know, we ain't gonna be too greedy. We, you know, they just passed the budget. We, you know, we still trying to be modest throughout the whole situation, even though we being overworked and underpaid, still trying to be modest. So I just want y'all to keep that in mind, and I just wanted to drop those numbers on y'all. Y'all, y'all make the best decision that y'all can.
Look, Shriver, did you say there is one additional speaker online?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Toby Lippin.
Sir?
Hello, it's, my name is Toby Lippin, and I have been following this closely as a longtime labor supporter and supporter of our city workers, who I think do a fabulous job, especially learning more during this about how understaffed so many departments are. As the council considers this, I really appreciate that Councilman Johnson came up with this, Councilperson Johnson came up with this proposal, since the city manager just couldn't figure it out. To me, it was like a math word problem you get in school and kind of have to figure out. But the median income in this area, which includes Durham and Chapel Hill, is now $116,200. And the city manager and her team and the budget director picked one-person households, and I would guess that very relatively few of the city workers, if you were gonna do a spread, are in one-person households. And so I think to base the whole decision on the lowest level versus like a three- or four-person household, which is about where the, the actual median family income comes in. So it's kind of an arbitrary number, and I'm concerned that the city manager has, seems has been resistant to this whole issue all the way along, and I feel like that bias is coming into this. So I encourage the council in your decision-making, if you're going to stay within the budget, to pick the option presented that is the most generous to workers. In my looking at it, there should be like a 2.5 compromise in between option two and five, and so, I mean, two and three. So I just think being the most generous, given that our city is growing and prosperous, et cetera, et cetera, think other people, like the worker who spoke before me, have, I don't need to repeat what they've said, they've already said it more eloquently than I could. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll turn it back over to council for any additional questions. Councilwoman Friedman, followed by Councilwoman Hozier Heinmann, and did I see your hand go up, may I pro tip?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. I just had a few questions for staff. Can you say how many employees are in each of these breakouts of AMI?
Yeah. Do you want to know how, so there's a, in the under 60% AMI, there's 120 employees. In the 60% to 80% AMI, there's 688 employees. 80% to 100% is 508 employees. 100% to 120% is 434. 120% to 150% is 316 employees, and above 150% is 191.
Can you repeat those again? Can you repeat those again?
Sure. The first, under 60 was 120. 60% to 80 is 688 employees. 80% to 100% is 508. 100% to 120 is 434. 120% to 150 is 316, and above 150 is 191.
And can you say the part-time number as well?
273.
273?
Mm-hmm.
And then I would like to know, I think specifically that I'm trying to figure out how to get all of these numbers up to 5,000, up to 106, and just understanding, like, I'm looking at the breakdown across the organization. I think that an additional 2 to 3 million might make the difference, and I think we could probably get there. I will say that I think it's important that we do move one of these options forward today, but I do think that it would be good to have council consider whether or not we want to do something about making all of those bonuses a little bit larger, depending on which one of these options we select. I think, I appreciate the comments that have been made, too. I will say that, that it's not lost on me that there's differences in departments and differences in sizes in all of the funds. I think I went around, a few rounds with the city manager on just how to make this happen, and I'm still pushing for this to happen. And I know she's not here today, but I know that our deputy city manager, Johnson, is definitely capable of taking the reins on moving that forward if the council decided that. And I will, I just want to note for everyone, for my council colleagues, that option one, because of the part-time workers being at 500 and those budget ordinances being written the way they are already, I would like to just go ahead and remove option one out of the way and just focus on option two or three. I'm open to either one.
Councilwoman Hozier Heinmann?
Yeah, thank you. And I don't know if it's appropriate, but I'd like to hear some more from staff to see what options they feel is hitting them in terms of what, because I know everybody has a different approach and opinion, but definitely what Mr. Chavis said, like, really hearing from the workers in terms of what, which one that they felt we would like to go with. But also, I know that we did not have anything laid out for the $5,000 bonus for up to $75,000, and would like to see if we could have some, just like you did a chart for the other stuff, just, even though I know it goes over the perceived budget that you said, the 6.5 million, but just kind of looking at that and seeing, you know, where we might be able to get some of that money, if we could, to make it, to make it for the $5,000 bonus up to $75,000. Like, we don't have the data in that, and I know it was over the budget, but could you give us some of that data in thinking where we might be able to pull to be able to make up that extra money? I mean, I don't, I don't know if you can do that. I know it wasn't here. I know, obviously, it's over the budget, so I guess I'm asking, is there any way to then go back and kind of give us this outline, just to see where else we might be? We might not be able to pull it, we might not be able to do that, but just to be able to look at some other options to see, could we do that? Could we take it from other places? I don't know. I'm not a budget person in terms of you. I have done budgets, but, so that's, I guess, my, because everybody's looking at me like I'm a little, like, I don't know, like, am I, I'm not saying it right?
Yeah, so this option, or not option, but the, the numbers that you see in front of us assume the $300 that is already... of us assume the $300 that is already budgeted for staff above $75,000. And then the new additional money. Right. You, you don't have an ordinance for that. You have the amount it would cost for the general fund and the total funds, but you do not have an ordinance for it across funds. Is that, is that what you're asking? I'm not sure if I answered your question, but...
I think for me also, too, and, and I don't even know if I should say this, but I think when we look at the amount of workers that are in sanitation and other places, like, it's an equitable issue for me because I also like to know, like, the ethic, I guess, the ethnic makeup of, like, how many workers that are in sanitation and are African-American, whatever, because we are still facing, like, when you, when he gets up here and he talks about the fact that we have city workers in sanitation living in hotels, right? And then I've also said in my one-on-one with the city manager, I personally feel, and I understand people do different jobs, there is such a range in terms of the lower staff and that higher staff and management. It's ridiculous. I don't even, it's the range of salary is crazy. Because we have some administrative, not, everybody does their job, but we have some administrative, just secretaries that are making in the 60s and 70,000 dollars. So I, I don't know how that happened. I wasn't on council then, I wasn't setting up salaries, but to me, being somebody who has been in administration, being somebody who has sat on university budgetary stuff, the range to me in terms of, is just, it's just too, it's just too, the gap is too wide. So when you look at most of the sanitary workers, you're looking at these men, most of them are, I don't know what the data is in terms of ethics, but most of them are what? Young men of color, older men of color, right? That's just very disheartening to me.
Any other comments from council? Councilwoman Cabuerre?
I just wanted to say I appreciated Councilmember Freeman's comment, and in particular because the part-time workers, which we know many of our part-time workers are, are women of color. They don't get health insurance, they don't get the pension plan that's offered for other folks. And so I, I'm not comfortable, it was one of my asks, is to keep that at $1,000. I thought it was really important to do that. So I, I'm open to either option 2 or 3, and just wanting to hear what others have to say.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also, I think option 2, to me, seems like the best option. I'm also, my second choice would be option 1. I don't love option 3. I think option 2 gets closest to my vision of a, of a reasonable distribution and of course keeps those part-time folks at $1,000. To the question of whether city council members would receive the bonus, I believe that we would. But I would be perfectly willing to exempt city council members from the ordinance so that we would not receive a bonus. If that is something that other folks, if that's something that would be a problem for the community, I'm perfectly happy to forego that $1,000. I also wanted, just a, a couple comments in general about our, our living wage policy. So, you know, our, our minimum livable wage at the city is just over $18 an hour. And we live in a state where the minimum wage is still 750. So I don't want to say that the city is, you know, that we don't need to pay more. We do need to pay more, and that's why we're doing a pay study, is to figure out exactly how much more we need to pay. But we are paying two and a half times the minimum wage at a minimum. And our, our minimum livable wage is also based on, it's based on cost of living. It's based on how much rents are for, for housing. So our minimum, so our minimum livable wage is gonna go up as housing costs go up. I'm not, you know, I'm not saying that it's enough, but it is, it is based on what, it is, it is based on a real number that we hope illustrates the cost to people in our community, living in our community, and will continue to go up as the cost of living in our community goes up. With regard to the AMI and, you know, for single-person households, the AMI was, was really just to determine where we made the cutoffs. If we'd used a different house, if we'd used a different number, we would have just used bigger numbers and cut it off at roughly the same, the same places. So that shouldn't, I hope that that doesn't concern people with regard to the, the staff using the AMI for one person as the way to just like make the, make the cutoffs happen between, you know, for example, an option 1, who gets 5 and who gets 3,500. We still have the same amount of money that we need to spread out. And we would just, those AMI numbers, those percentages would be, would be different, those numbers, but the cutoffs would have to be roughly the same in order to spread the money out in what we hope is a fair way. Yeah, I, I would also love to vote on this today and move this process along so folks can get this money as soon as possible. Another thing that I want to just flag for people, the, the schools recently had an issue with bonuses, with folks not, not expecting the taxes that came out of their bonuses. And so I want to make sure that we communicate clearly with employees about what the taxes will be on your bonus, because nobody is gonna get a full 5 or 4 or 2750 or whatever. That bonus is gonna be taxed. There's a couple different ways that the city can tax it, and we can make sure that the finance department communicates clearly with y'all about what that's gonna look like, because the, the school district has recently had a lot of confusion with folks around how much got taken out of paychecks, and I don't want us to, to have that problem. So just FYI, your bonus will be taxed. How much it's taxed might depend on things like your exemptions, right, and your salary, but, or it might be taxed at a flat rate, and the finance department can tell us which is gonna be, which is gonna happen, but please don't expect $5,000 net to come through your paycheck if you're in this lowest category. That's not gonna happen. So just to reiterate on the options, my, my first choice is option 1, sorry, my first choice is option 2, second is option 1, and third choice would be option 3. Thank you.
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I appreciate all the comments made today. However, I think, you know, what's, what's really driving my, my decision here is I'm informed by the voices that I've heard in the room, as well as the voices that I've heard in the community at large. And, you know, this, this is tough work. And the reason why we're basing this on logic, you know, on numbers here, is because we have to have some common basis that relate, that is somehow impacting everyone. There is no way in the world we can make decisions based on individualized circumstances or situations. In that case, we would be trying to make a decision off of 2,600 stories. So for me, I, I remember making my last comments, I was talking about reweighting the equity, reweighting the equity lens on this. And so I was leaning toward initially option 2, but also, as I keep talking about this loaf of bread, you know, the loaf of bread costs the same in a grocery store, no matter who buys it, but it does impact individuals differently, whether you make a lot of money or not so much money. So I, that is what started having me lean toward option 2. And, and I think that this is, it, it does provide more of an equitable approach to it. We are hearing folks in the room, you know, we, and sometimes we, we hear from the same people that go from being a expert, you know, fire advocate, to affordable housing advocate, to a now solid waste or sanitation worker advocate. And I think advocacy is important, and I appreciate those voices. However, you know, we, we have to be able to make these decisions based on the information that's provided to us in order to be fair to everyone. So I, I'm leaning toward option 2. I do, and I, if no one else will, I will call that motion for us to make an action today so that we can get this as soon as possible. There, there was a comment made earlier about the, the, what our, our city employees are getting paid versus other municipalities, but that is why we have the pay study coming. And if we were not, if we didn't have that pay study coming in, in December, or starting, whenever it is starting, then I may be in a different place. But the pay study allows us to take a snapshot of where the market is at that moment. And that will look at all of those municipalities, and it will allow us to have information to get everyone's pay where it is. Now, I don't foresee us, if someone, if the value of a position across the market is down, I don't see us taking anybody's pay and dropping it. But if the value of, of a position, of a position in the market is up, then of course we're gonna increase that. So I think, I think with the information presented to us, we're making the best decisions that we possibly can. And to the comment earlier about the 6.5 being arbitrary, it's far from arbitrary. You know, we, we have, you know, very accomplished and very well-trained city staff that have put this information together for us. And 6.5 was that threshold to keep us from, get it to a point of starting to impact the city in a harmful way financially. So I think, you know, I, I think that the conversations we're not hearing is, you know, the folks on the other end of the spectrum and how they are gonna be feeling, you know, and I think we do have to make those tough decisions sometimes where, yeah, you, you make more money, but sometimes money's not that actual currency that matters to folks. So morale is something we have to consider, and I can appreciate that as well. So I do know that there are some folks that have been coming in here talking about these issues that are not gonna get what they initially thought they were gonna get. And, and what's happening is, your advocacy has helped informed us on making a decision potentially that will have your brother or sister in, in work get a little more than you maybe. But that's, that's what equity is all about, you know? So it's getting folks what they need where they are. So that's the reality of what we're presented with. I cannot make a decision on anyone's individual circumstance based on just them telling me because I, I don't have anything scientifically based that on. So I'm gonna go with making the best decision based on the information provided that, that, you know, impacts everybody across the city. So I, I am gonna lean toward option 2, and I'll, I'll yield for more comments. And if not, then I don't mind making that motion to suspend the rules and vote today.
Anyone else have any other comments?
I'm, I'm gonna try to make a, a few brief comments, at least I hope they will be brief. I, I've struggled mightily in this area. I am still committed to the request that has been proposed by our workers, which was the 5,000 for everybody under 75. I am, though, also equally concerned about those who don't meet that threshold, who are struggling, you know, even though you may be making, and I've heard the firefighters and some others who are making that at the 90, 90 or below, it's still a struggle. It's still a struggle, and I have not given up that we can't find a way to make that happen. However, I've not been in the majority vote on any of this and would not expect to get those needs met as I would like them to be and was looking for points of compromise. And at the last meeting, we at least had a number that we know people were willing to give out, which was the 6.5 million. After that, Councilwoman Freeman and I had a long meeting with the city manager. I ended up having to leave that meeting to go to another meeting, saying wherein can we pull monies from? Where can we find monies from? My first ask was, what about in participatory budgeting? There is $2 million there. My second ask was, what about in our CIP budget, where those are capital improvement? Is there a way to try to figure out how we slow down some projects or not in? My third was, we had agreed to expand the community safety department, how can we not expand that? Also, look within your own shop, you know, within the city budgets for departments. Is there a way for department heads to go back and to try to decrease their budgets by 3% to 5% and see what, where those monies would land us as a total? Because I don't know that people will mind having it split as long as they got it, right? I am committed for the time remaining that I am mayor to keep pushing that conversation, that that needs to be looked at, that there are ways, even though I left that conversation very frustrated because that was a no. No, 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 we can't. And it's, it's complex when you hear how those numbers are explained from different employees coming out of different budgets or funds and how it all comes together. But complexity shouldn't equate to impossibility. And it shouldn't be a no, it should be, let us see where we can go so that in the interim, folk can look internally to see where we can find extra money. And it may be that they won't get a bonus in a whole, but it can be done in part. But like I said, I haven't enjoyed the support of the majority and management to a certain degree. So I'm gonna put it out there and tell you that. That's where I'm gonna push today. I am willing to go with option 2 or option 3 because we know we got a majority. I think that we'll be willing to do that. I like option 3, though, because it does take into account the higher, the ones on the higher end, but there's a split. But I think there's a way to still, if we look within our own budgets, to make up the shortfall so that those on the upper end can get their, the 2,000 and the 2,500 and still somehow or another get that lower end all at 5,000. But I don't run the numbers, and I can only rely on the expertise of those who have, who are in charge of that. But I do know from having run budgets that there is a way to relook at things, reallocate and give it, and make up that shortfall later. So I'll vote for it today, but I will not give up on your ask.
Madam Mayor, I, I'll, I'll join you in option 3. I, I think it's fine. I think just pertaining to the, to your comments, I think, you know, part of it is, once we vote on a budget, we, we've set that budget ordinance in place, and I, I think that's why it's been so difficult to get there. But I, I just want to say I'll join you in option 3.
And I'm saying either one. I can, I just want some monies to be divvied up today, and we hope that we can get a commitment, at least from some of the members of council, that you will not give up on what the total ask was.
Right. And that, and that's me, I didn't explain that when I was speaking, but that's what I was talking about. Looking at, there was no, like, kind of outline for what, going over the budget, right? So the mayor clearly said it may be better than I could, can. And I'm gonna join her in not giving up for the original ask. And I'm willing to vote on what we have to vote on today. But again, I, I'd like to hear from the Senate, like, what, what, which ones would be beneficial for them? Maybe that's just me, I don't know. But I am joining the mayor, and I'm joining, I know Dejana Freeman, I don't know about my other colleagues, because we're the ones who've had meetings, but I'm joining, which is, I maybe didn't articulate the way that the mayor did, but that's what I was saying. Can we find other money to get, to go with the original ask? And she clearly said it very eloquently, and that's what I was trying to say. So I'm also gonna join with her in not giving up.
And I would also join the mayor in that, and that's exactly what I was pushing at and saying, like, there's, just knowing where the numbers are. I know it's a financial ask. And finishing the conversation, I will say that the city manager made it very clear that in this current budget, there is a, a push to save about $10 million, which is not, so the budget's been passed, but we're looking to save $10 million in this current budget. And in order to do any additional, we would have to save an additional 3 million. So that would be pushing us to $13 million. And so that would take all of the departments, and then figuring out if there were any extra funds elsewhere to move us to that point. And I think that we can get there. And so I am committed to pushing for that 5,000 because I think it's important, especially critical for those under $90,000. And so I, I think option 3, like, like I said before, does get us closest to that, and I'm fine with moving forward. Option 3, if you, if, I, I think, I'll, I guess, I can listen for more, but I think we, we at least had 4, if people say they would go with option 3. And I can move forward with a request to suspend the rules when you're, when you're ready.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, colleagues. I think...
I think, for me, option two, I think gets us closest to the most equity, but I can certainly live with option three as well. I think if you make $75,001, you get $300 under the 5,000 bonus for folk under 75. And if you make $75,000, you get five grand, $1 over that, $300. I don't know how to explain that to people. I just don't know how to explain that to people. So, you know, we'll have to keep pushing. In terms of supporting, listen, I support reparations and guaranteed income. I'd love to write a check for everybody. But I've learned a lot of things about the way a city works. It's kind of like, in many ways, the way we run our households, only a whole lot more money. And some of the decisions that we face in running our households, even though you might have money in your savings account, you got a whole bunch of stuff coming down the road. You could just empty your savings account and buy that car or buy the refrigerator at one fell swoop, or buy that, you know, furniture suite. You could, and then the next week, your roof falls in. So there are things that, you know, that inform this decision. Part of our responsibility and promise to you is that we would, we would take the time to study things and become knowledgeable about things so you won't have to. That's how a representative democracy works. So I support number two, and I would support, I could live with number three. And I'll say this finally. I've listened to so many impassioned and powerful speeches. I hope I get to vote for some of you to sit in these seats. I really do. I hope I get to pass out flyers and knock on doors for some of you, because we're not going to be in these seats forever. Thank God. We're not going to be in these seats forever. And I hope that by the time you get here, this job is still worth having. I hope this job pays enough so you don't have to be a CEO or independently wealthy or have a life configured in a way where you could do this job. I hope the job is worth having. I hope that when you get here, you won't have to make decisions of whether or not about childcare, whether you can put gas in your car. I hope this city honors your work enough that when you get in this seat, you'll want to stay in it, and you'll be able to do it comfortably. That's my hope. So be careful, you know, how we set things up now, because when it's your turn, when it's other people's turn, we want it to be worth having. That's my prayer and hope. And I've heard some candidates already, some folk in here, that I would be proud to support to sit in these seats. I hope the job is still worth having. I support number two, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to try to go back to explain a little bit clearer while I was looking at option three with the hope that we could make up the shortfall. The requests of the city employees were for the 75,000, below 75,000, you get five grand, and above would be, was 500. So, and as I've tried to look at these numbers over the weeks, option three, in my opinion, you would have, just looking at the numbers, you would have a little bit more equity across the line if we can make up that shortfall. Because if we choose option three, you're then left with three categories of workers who have not gotten that 75 grand, which would be the 688 of folk, I believe in the 60 to 80, the 508 in the next category of the 434, which is the bulk. But the other two tiers would have gotten something, and maybe if you can find enough money, you may be able to enhance 150. But you will be left with, you know, paying two of those categories an extra $2,500 each, and then one would be given $1,250. If, in fact, we were able to kind of, at some point, give them another bite at that bonus, you would be left with maybe three categories of folk who would have that additional money that you're looking for. Does that make sense? That's my rationale for looking at option three because it, and then that upper tier is not left totally out with just basic $500, if that makes sense. So that's just my, but I am perfectly willing to vote for either one today and would offer, ask somebody to offer a motion to suspend the rules. Then we'll take about a two or three-minute break so we can kind of, and come back and we'll vote.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to suspend the rules so that we can move forward today.
Okay.
All right. It has been motioned by Councilwoman Freeman that we suspend the rules. It's been seconded by Councilwoman Williams. All those in favor, if you would sign my stating, aye. Aye. All those opposed have the same right, hearing none. Those rules are suspended, and we will come back. Let us give about five minutes to come back, for everybody to digest where we are, and then we'll take a vote, and you all should, in your pockets, with the hope that we come back again. we come back again. All right, everybody, we are back and our rules have been suspended. I do want to note for the record that along with Councilwoman Johnson, I will exempt myself from that $1,000 for, for employees. And we are now ready to entertain a motion on our options.
Madam Mayor.
Just so we, I'm sorry, had the budget language and making sure that the ordinance reflects that we all would be exempted. And I think Councilmember Caballero was checking.
My advice was to ask the city attorney how we would phrase the ordinance language to exempt counsel from bonuses.
Madam Mayor, I'm not going to opine right this second, but I will work with staff to develop the appropriate language. Generally, it would be to exempt the elected members of the council, correct?
Yes, Madam, Madam Attorney, is, can we do, do it with the motion? Because I think our hope was to be able to pass the ordinance language today. Can we say it with the motion language and then it could get adapted or no, we can't do that?
Sure. I think that would be appropriate.
Okay.
Yes.
Whoever's making the motion would just add that as their, in their language?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would it be appropriate to say, so a motion to adopt or?
Option number?
A motion to adopt ordinance for option number three and to move to adopt the resolution for option three with the exemption for city council members.
I think that's, that's close enough that we, and we will refine that language for the final adopted ordinance. Can we?
Or whether it could even just be direction to staff to do that?
Sure.
I don't know what the...
Council, Councilman Williams followed by Councilwoman Jose Heimann. I think they have questions.
No, I was about to make the motion.
Okay, great. Do you have a question?
Before, before we go with the motion, I am going to also exempt myself, but I want to say that I'm doing that because I want you to get your money. But I really could use the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, $9,000 because I've spent so much money trying to make sure that I knew I didn't do anything and to have to have counsel. So I am going to, I want to put it on the record, I'm going to exempt myself, but I really could use all of their money for my money that I had to spend out. Thank you.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, back to the actual matter at hand. I am going to make a motion that we go with option three with the exemption of elected officials on the council. I'd love a second.
All right. It has been moved by Councilman Williams and it has been seconded by both Councilwoman Johnson and Councilwoman Freeman. I just want to note that for the record, that both of them said it at the same time and that's a great thing. All those in favor, if you would sign by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed have the same right. Hearing none, we have a unanimous decision.
Congratulations.
Madam Mayor. Just in, in making sure to move forward, a direction for staff to look at what it would look like to cover those three additional groupings for the additional funding to get them to 5,000.
Yes, I, I would ask that city staff look at those areas that I talked with the city manager about, as well as, you know, any additional fundings that can be found within departments and ask if they will come back to us with those numbers. I'd like to know those numbers prior to my last work session if possible, so that I will have some idea that it, it was on its road to getting done between then and the pay study. So my last, I think, work session is November 21st, something like that. So, so that if I don't get a chance to actually vote on it, I would like to at least know that I've seen the numbers and that it's possible. Anybody have any problem with that? Just go back and look. That's all I'm asking. Make a good faith effort to look for that extra money and give it to them at the appropriate time. All right, we are now at our next order of business, which will be our task force and boards and commission. We will have one commission that needs to be re-advertised. We appointed, we have agreed to appoint the same person twice. So we are going to re-advertise for one open vacancy on participatory budgeting. Did I get that right? Clerk Schreiber? Okay. So other than that, if you would give us your report today.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council has nominated the following applicants to boards, committees, commissions, and task forces. Taylor Price was nominated to the Durham City County Environmental Affairs Board for the category of at-large. Perna Desai to the Durham Convention and Visitors Bureau, Discover Durham, for the category of lodging limited services. Tracy Gibson and Murphy Liu were nominated by majority vote to the Participatory Budgeting Steering Committee, representing at-large. And the nominations to the Human Relations Commission for vacancies are as follows. Michael L. Ross, representing Caucasian non-Hispanic person. Michael Maldondo Melgar, representing Hispanic Latino person. DiMario Melvin, representing other person. And Alexandria Gwynn is representing African-American person. And then the, the one opening vacancy to the PB committee will be re-advertised.
Thank you so much, Clerk Schreiber. We will now turn to Deputy City Manager Bertha Johnson to settle our agenda. We do have, we had that one poor item on there. Okay, so we're going to leave that on GBA. Just a quick update on the one with Mr. Ellison.
Yes.
Would you give us an update on that?
Yeah, I'm, I'll.
Williams?
I'd like to request that we move ops, not option.
It is?
What number was that?
Item 13.
Item 13 to GBA.
13?
It was the, um...
12, 12.
I'm sorry, 12.
12 was referred back, yes.
12.
Option 12 was, not option.
The, um...
The trash compactor. Just moving into GBA, we want to try and have one more meeting with staff. I already spoke to staff about it. They're okay with it as well. We have one more meeting and then we'll just finalize everything at the next meeting.
Thank you for your help on that.
Madam Mayor, I have on consent items 1 through 11, items 14 through 16, GBA, item number 12, the compactor, and public hearings, items 17, 17 through 20, and item 13 was referred back to staff.
Thank you so much. I will now entertain a motion to settle our agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Caballero, seconded by Councilman Williams. All those in favor, if you would sign by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed have the same right. Hearing none, our motion, our agenda is settled. Are there, is there anything else to claim our attention today? All righty. We stand in adjournment at 3:14 on October 5th, 2023. Bull City Strong.